Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 28th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a roll call, please?
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morset.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of the minutes from the August 14th closed session minutes and the regular meeting minutes.
Aye, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next we have approval of the bills with Mr. Beersdade.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move to approve payment of bills in the amount of $1,385,749.16 subject to Comptroller's Review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, before we have public comments, our city administrator would like to introduce our newest member to the city staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to take a quick moment to introduce on his second day of work, our new EMS director, Jason Strout. Jason comes to us with his wife and two children. They recently moved to River Falls from Virginia Beach, Virginia, and we're happy to have him. I just wanted to make a brief introduction and I'm sure Jason will stay around for the meeting and if you want to introduce yourself a little bit more afterwards. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for being here. Scott assured me if I took the position, the winters here would not be much worse than Virginia, so I'm looking forward to that. And I look forward to getting to know all of you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
I hope you got that in writing.
Yeah.
At least all year round, you get a nice summery feel on the side of the building, so don't forget to look over there.
Okay, any other public comments? Come on up and sign in and...
My name is Ben Fox, formerly of 680 County Road Double M. There is a lot of conflict between the Town of Troy and River Falls, which I've known about for years. I've known that the parcel we purchased really has no representative because of the lack of communication between the Town of Troy and City of River Falls and the county, and it's just kind of embarrassing. And so when the city names a town road that is formerly a county road, it should at least follow its own policy and rules. The policy on street naming of River Falls, which I won't get into farther, is that street names should be avoided in accordance with the following criteria: duplication of existing street names within the City of River Falls, emergency response area by similarly world spelling, spellings, or sound should not be permitted. Examples Briar Lane and Briar Court, Beach Avenue and Peach Avenue, Apple Hill Road and an apple. What the city has done is in clear violation of its own rules by naming what was formerly Double M Paulson Road, or sorry, Powell Avenue, because adjacent to it, you have Apollo Road. So if the emergency services sign off on the fact that those two are not sounding similar, I have no problem with it. But if the city emergency services think that Apollo Avenue and Apollo Road being on the border of City of River Falls and Town of Troy on both sides have no conflict with sound or spelling, I have no problem with it. Also, the compost fee on the later in the agenda, I was just wondering if they could also look at providing for food waste also, because that's a significant portion of your garbage. Just thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Anybody else have anything? Okay, I think Mr. Morset had something we'd like to talk about.
The Town of Troy and the City of River Falls engaged in two different boundary discussions. I was involved in one most, the most recent one, and hoped that both sides were proceeding in good faith. Both times, the representatives of the Town of Troy chose not to move forward. In July of 2016, the city annexed our own property in Man Valley. We did so legally, providing all the proper notifications as required by Wisconsin state statutes. There was no contact from the Town of Troy regarding their concerns over the annexation for the code that was used. The Town of Troy, rather than discuss the matter first, sued the city. The St. Croix District Court ruled in favor of the City of River Falls in November of 2017. After the ruling, property owners requested annexation to make the land contiguous to the city, making any appeal moot. Yet, the Town of Troy proceeded with the appeal. The appeals court refused to hear the case as it was moot. That was their ruling. The Town of Troy's action cost the taxpayers of the City of River Falls in excess of $180,000, $180,000, plus countless staff hours, not to mention the unnecessary expense the taxpayers of the Town of Troy had to pay for their side as well. Troy has shown no desire to repair the damage they have caused with this unnecessary legal action to the relationship between the city and the town board. With this in mind, I question why we would continue any kind of working relationship with the Town of Troy, especially with regard to the EMS services currently in place. Let me be clear. I'm not suggesting that we put the residents in the Town of Troy currently served by our EMS service in danger or without EMS coverage. Rather, I'm suggesting that we examine the current contract in place and within the terms of the contract, consider if it is in the best interest of the residents and the taxpayers of the City of River Falls to continue. I would request that staff prepare a report that examines the following: the EMS financial model with and without the service to the Town of Troy, as well as contract requirements for notices of termination available to both parties. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any public comments? Okay, next we move on to report from Wisconsin, West Central Wisconsin BioSalads, and I think Randy Lindquist is here to give us a report.
As Randy steps up, I just want to just remind everybody that River Falls was one of the original communities in West Central BioSalads, and still are one of the larger ones, and Randy is here to give us our annual report. Randy?
I guess I'm not sure I was prepared for an annual report.
Annual report in quotation marks.
Little history, little update. I wasn't quite sure what you guys wanted. A little history of the BioSalads facility. Kevin's right, you guys are one of the 11 original members. True intergovernmental cooperation. It's hard enough to get you guys to agree on a topic, let alone 11 different boards, and that happened in 1995. 11 different communities came together to form our organization. What we do is process sludge, BioSalads, residuals, whatever you want to call it, from your wastewater treatment plants. We're located in Ellsworth. It was kind of built to comply with 180-day storage rule. They didn't want us to apply this residual sludge, whatever you want to call it, onto the farm fields on the frozen and snow-covered ground, and it ends up in our lakes and rivers and streams. So we cleaned up a lot of the area. It was less expensive to build one plant, let alone 11. That's why we did what we did. We currently serve 21 communities, 11 of the original founding members and 10 more. 10 others thought it was a pretty good idea after we built it to have us process their stuff also. We travel as much as 60 miles away. Everything we do is trucked in, so that's not cheap. It's one of our biggest expenses is the trucking. We do produce what's considered an exceptional quality Class A sludge. It can be land applied in your garden. Most of it gets distributed on farm fields still, but it is a safe product. What else do I have here? Kevin had mentioned some financial information. We don't make any money. We don't lose any either. We just provide a service. Right now, we don't have any debt. We charge you exactly what it costs us to process your waste. If I don't charge you enough at the end of the year, I'm going to send you another bill. If I charge you too much, I send you a refund. Fortunately, the last few years, Kevin, I think you guys have gotten a pretty good refund, $15,000, $20,000 anyway. So we've been pretty fiscal. Kevin is a past board member of ours. I think Ron is still on our board, and hopefully will be for a long time here. Non-members, the ones that didn't jump on board right away, are charged a little bit more. We charge them 10% over the cost, so you guys get a little better deal. As far as volume, we process 20 million gallons total of sludge. That's about 4 million pounds of BioSalads a year. River Falls, I just had that number here, 354 truckloads last year at 2.5 million gallons and 713,465 pounds of waste we held out of your city last year for you. I don't know the actual cost of that, though, off the top of my head. We're governed by a five-member board. As I said, Kevin's a past member, Ron is a current member, chosen from those 11 communities. They serve a five-year term. They govern the month-to-month, day-to-day activities. We've had three full-time employees ever since the place was built. They've had three guys working there. Not the same three, but we've got two that have been there for 18 years. I've been there for six and a half, I suppose. We operate on about a $2 million budget, give or take a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. And again, we're out of debt. Our equipment's holding up pretty well. We're doing pretty good. If there's any specific questions you guys have for us, ask away.
Anybody have any questions?
I would encourage you guys to come to our annual meeting in November as we decide our rates or budgets, free meal, anyway. Coffee, donuts, all that happy stuff. But it's good to, Kevin can speak of this, too. The last four or five annual meetings we've had, we've barely had a quorum of the 11 communities. Only six have shown up. Thankfully, you guys have, but it's nice to see the board members there as well. More than welcome to join us. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next I'd like to close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2018-09. This is an ordinance repealing section 2.04.130, the committee of the whole, and this is the second reading. Does anybody in the audience has any questions about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing, and I will take a...
Mr. Mayor, I move for ordinance 2018-09 repealing section 2.04.130, committee of the whole.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next I'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2018-10. This is an ordinance repealing section 10.24.080, which is the snowmobile renters license. There again, this is the second reading. Does anybody in the audience has any questions about this? We'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2018-10. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, there again, I'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2008-11. This is an ordinance repealing section 10.20 for bicycles. This is the second reading. There again, does anybody have any questions in the audience? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing and ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2018-11, an ordinance repealing section 10.20, bicycle, secondary reading and disposition.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just want to reiterate that I checked with staff. This does not affect our bike, what's our, what's the term, bike friendly?
Oh.
Bike, bike city?
Bike, yep, or bike friendly.
This doesn't impact that in any way.
It makes it more bike friendly.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, now, one more time, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2018-12. This is an ordinance amending chapter 2.64 of the utility advisory board. This would, concerning the council and as far as president, vice president, yada, yada, yada. So, does anybody have any questions about this? Well, that was a technical yada. Guys, I'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing on this.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve ordinance number 2018-12 for the yada, yada, yada.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we move on to consent agenda. Seven is acknowledgment of the following minutes: the library board from 6:25, EMS advisory board from 6:4, the police and fire commission from 6:4, utility advisory board from 6:18, and the business improvement district from 7:10. Next one is a resolution approving the 2019 through 2023 capital improvement plan. Next one is a resolution regarding compost cleanup fee. This resolution would place a fee on the utility bill to fund the compost site and other cleanup events. Next one is a resolution regarding Safe Ride Home program. This is just adding hours to the taxi service for the Safe Ride Home program for the next year. Resolution regarding Hanson Utility Easement and Hanson Drive Right Away Cleanup. Next one is a resolution authorizing North Substation SCADA panel purchase. This would allow staff to enter an agreement with Energy's high-voltage resources to build the SCADA panel required to connect the North Substation to the SCADA system supporting future substation electrical updates. And the last one is a resolution regarding electric service, truck chassis, and body. This would approve the purchase of a Super Duty F-450 main chassis from Chrysler Steel for the electric utility. Does anybody want to poll anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll consent agenda items eight, 11, and 12.
I'll take a motion and everything else?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve consent agenda items seven A through E, nine, 10, and 13.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Mr. Downing, you pulled number eight?
Resolution approving 2019-2023 capital improvement plan. I've got a couple of questions. I'm going to start with one about the council chambers and what all that entails for future planning is what we have so far.
Assistant City Minister Beersdade, can you provide a quick...
Sorry, Julie, I forgot you wanted to give a presentation.
That was okay with me for a while there. What am I doing? Good evening, Mayor and Council members. The council is being asked to review the CIP, the five-year CIP tonight, and I just have a few of the highlights to point out, so we make sure we cover what you're approving tonight for the public and for you. The five-year plan includes projects and capital improvements that are cost of $5,000 and a life of one year over. In future years, you probably will see a higher number than that, because $5,000 is pretty low. We didn't change it for this meeting, but probably two years from now, that'll be changed. Whoops, I better put on a new screen. The plan was updated this spring by department heads and then presented to the city council in draft form in a workshop in June. No major changes have been made since the council has seen it in workshop setting. There have been some tweaks, but no major changes. The plan totals about $42.5 million in projects and capital purchases in a variety of areas. This plan, the highest funded categories include the city buildings, which includes a proposed police department replacement building; economic development, which includes the Man Valley Corporate Park proposed; parks includes the implementation of Glen Park construction; and the transportation, which includes the Highway 35 and Division Street interchange. So these four projects alone make up about 50% of the plan, so these are major to the city. I'll go over those in a little bit. Funding for the projects, it comes from a wide variety of sources. This slide is just a summary of most of those. As most projects, many of the projects have a useful life of 20, 30, and perhaps even 40 years. Long-term financing is used for some of these projects. General obligation, which is mostly tax-based debt, is used for approximately $13 million of these projects, which includes the police station, Glen Park, and a replacement firetruck. There are some other water and electric debt proposed in here for specific projects for those funds. Funding is also provided by the State of Wisconsin, about $2.25 million. Tax increment districts, which is about $7 million, and several other city funds do provide financing for the projects. But the most important thing is the general property tax levy is only 4% of this five-year CIP, so it's about $1.7 million. So it's not a huge portion of the costs of this. So to go through some of those major projects that we saw in the beginning, Division Street and Highway 35 interchange is, most of this is funded by the State of Wisconsin through the Wisconsin DOT and about $2 million. Other funding that's important for this project is the developer contributions that were collected from Highview Meadows and Royal Oak subdivisions. So that is paying a portion of this proposed interchange. There is also some utility financing and debt financing. Project is expected to be completed in 2020. The Glen Park implementation, which you've heard about all year, is proposed to be started in fall of this year with completion approximately a year from now. The city did receive a FEMA grant of $640,000 for the storm shelter portion of this, and bonds were issued earlier this summer for the geo-financing. One of the other major projects, Man Valley Corporate Park, proposed to be planned in 2021 and 2022 with possible construction following that year in 2023. I think that depends on how the planning and the interest goes for that. Funding is proposed to be utility and tax increment funding, and again, that depends on the projects in the area. The police department proposed building is one of the larger projects in the plan at $7.5 million. The existing building has a square footage of about 15,000 square feet, and it's, it was evaluated earlier this year and proposed to be too small for future operations of that department. And again, the proposed cost is included in the plan is $7.5 million of approximately 29,000 square foot facility, and it could be combined with a fire and EMS North Interceptor project, you also have heard a lot about this year. The easements and the land acquisition are in process this year. If the land is acquired, the construction is proposed for 2019. And some other utility projects are up there. That AMI is certainly in the plan. North Zone Water Tower is in the plan, but that might be dependent on development in that area. The city does monitor and plan for replacement of vehicles. We have a significant investment in our, all of our vehicles and equipment, so most of them are on a regular replacement schedule. This tries to keep the investment in replacement on more of an even keel, so there are not huge spikes in the investment or the costs related to that. Larger purchases such as a firetruck and plow trucks are usually financed over a five, 10, or 15-year period. So the CIP works in conjunction with the biannual budget preparation, the city's fiscal plan update, and if approved by the council this evening, we will include these projects in the budget that you will be reviewing next month at a workshop session. So I can answer any questions? I can try to answer the question. Councilmember Downing had, you were talking about upgrades, or we had included a project for upgrades to the council chambers here, and some of it is related to these monitors, some of it's related to the cameras, some of it's actually physical changes that we don't have fully defined yet unless maybe somebody else does, but I don't, just to make the room more usable. So that's what I know about it, but maybe Scott has some other comments.
Physical changes we talked about is permanent. The two of us that use 50% of our versus what we allow for public space, so some of what we're talking about, we've got to do upgrades, although we don't have to do any upgrades for quality-wise and community digital broadcast and have one of them creates. So clarity on the monitors, but physically this dais and sound takes up quite a bit. In fact, if we're looking at alternative locations, this is a good spot, except for it's not because of big furniture, fixed furniture in this room. So although it's attractive and it's functional for us, it isn't...
Although it's functional and attractive, it's not, it doesn't, for a council meeting, it doesn't work as well for other things, so that was the main thought for including that project, to develop some more functionality, develop some more functionality for this room based on that. So I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, and I had a couple other questions regarding the CIP. One of them would be the downtown alley upgrades. It includes $85,000 for that up in it. What would those upgrades be that we're looking at for the downtown alley?
I believe we've got that shown as kind of a challenge grant, so to speak, for a property owner. So we know that the condition of the alleys, in particular, commercial alleys, are not the greatest. Those alleys serve a public function, but they also have some significant private benefit to the adjacent property owners. So we've struggled for years to get money to make it a priority of all the things we do in transportation to make alleys be a priority, and so this, the thought here was that, based on the feedback we have from council, is we would try to put some money in, essentially saying to, we can do about one block. So if, if the owners on a certain block downtown said, we really want to get together and do something, we would assess 50% of the cost to that block based on frontage, and then the other 50% would essentially be an investment by the city. So that's, I don't think we're expecting to get much more than one block, depending on the construction type, but it's, is essentially from property boundary to property boundary concrete alleyway, commercial-grade alleyway. I'm trying to think of a specific one that we've already done that would be a comparable. But I'm drawing a blank on a block that would be all concrete, what we would be proposing. Do we have any models? No, so we would be creating the model. Is there a question?
Does. You're looking at, you know, user friendliness, open to the public, maybe some artwork, clean it up, is what we're looking at, maybe?
The money in here, I think I want to be clear, is primarily for the physical transportation surface, so, and some stormwater, other things, but it's, it wouldn't be kind of rear facade work. It would be to get the physical, the crumbling asphalt and concrete cleaned up. At the money we have in here, there's not much for any kind of aesthetic improvements. Although the bid district has been doing some of that, and they do have some funding sources for that. I can think of two or three that... I can think of two or three that have done some cleanup between Second and Main Street in the last five years. And they did it through the bid program.
Would the corridor project be an opportunity to include some of the more of the other parts that we're talking about, then?
It would, but I don't-- this five-year plan doesn't proactively fund anything that would come out of the corridor plan. So I think there is an expectation that the corridor plan is going to say, "Here are some key alleyways, or here are some key improvements that we want to make in the downtown area." But we're not proactively funding them through this CIP. We'd have to-- I mean, that-- we would take the corridor plan, and then those would have to be put in future CIPs.
All right. Thank you, Scott. And I have one last question for Kevin Westhouse, utility director. And it has to do with oxidation ditch aeration.
Yes.
It's listed here. And I kind of want the public to know a little bit more about it because it's one of those technical terms that's--
Oh, danger, danger. I can go for an hour. I would love-- I can talk to it real briefly, all right? So we have two oxidation ditches, of which we use one right now. The oxidation ditch area is what we call the bottleneck in the plant right now. If you remember the report you saw, we got a B on one section of the plant, and that was due to the lack of oxygen that gets into our product. Right now, we have physical rotors that introduce oxygen into our product. They're really inefficient energy-wise, and they're inefficient in getting oxygen into the product. There are other ways to do that. One is called fine bubble aeration, where you have a blower and motors introducing oxygen from the floor of the ditch. And it's quite a process to engineer that and install these little pads on the whole floor of the ditch. That will introduce enough oxygen to increase the capacity of the plant. We have two ditches. We only use one. So we'll do one ditch, move the product to that ditch, and then we'll do the other ditch as well.
And the old ditches are from what, 1970?
Probably Ron's 70s, '79 or '80. And I just want to give you-- I'm going to-- I only need to talk up Ron and Bill Swenson out there. So we had one of these rotors break here about two months ago. And the cost to replace that was over $100,000. Well, Bill Swenson, he's just an awesome mechanic and a guy who really gets after it. They ordered some flanges, he got his welding helmet on, and they actually welded that thing and got it back running again for, I think, probably under $10,000. So, I mean, it's your employees that care and take the time and effort. It's amazing. So hats off to Ron and his guys to be able to do that. So it's up and running until we get the aeration going.
Perfect. Well, you've answered the $710,000 question. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval, consent to agenda item number eight.
Second.
All in favor? I opposed. You polled 11.
Yep. Resolution regarding Hanson Utility Easement and Hanson Drive Right-of-Way Cleanup.
Sean, I have a little presentation on that. Would you like to hear that?
Yep. My question is, is there any technical details that have changed since the plan came out? Maybe you can answer them while you're talking.
Okay. Well, I'll talk through it, and then we'll see if it leads to that question or not. How about that?
Sounds good.
Just a couple minutes.
Thank you.
Again, Mayor, City Council, Kevin Westhouse, utility director. And in your packet, there's quite a few pages with one called the Hanson Easement and Right-of-Way Cleanup. I think if I just take two minutes, that information will make a lot more sense to you than it does trying to figure out dimensions and right-of-ways and all that stuff. I want to go back, but before I even start, I need to be very clear that the Hanson family and the Hanson Family Trust has been very patient and very cooperative with the city over the time we've been trying to resolve these issues. They've been nothing but a pleasure to work with, and this is really on the city to get this fixed. That'll lead me into where we start. In 2003, so let's go back 15 years, if you can recognize where we are here. Here's the baseball field, the campground, the interstate, and the hospital. We put a three-phase line in down here to the hospital from the north sub, and we have a loop situation going on. We put in 1,430 feet of three-phase line from this point on the Hanson property to this point. We continue to, of course, but this is the Hanson property, 1,430 feet. And we did that without a formal written easement to do that. That's a problem. It's a problem with a single-phase line, with any line. So for 15 years, the Hanson family's been saying, "Hey, let's try to get this easement situation resolved." We have not done it yet. Been working with the Hanson family the last 18 months, and I think we maybe we've come to a final idea of an agreement to get this resolved, and that's what's in your packet tonight. I think I have about five bullet points. Moving forward, part of the agreement that we're talking about is they have-- the Hanson family has some desires to clean up some of the Hanson Drive from Division Street up to their property line here, clean up some of the right-of-way issues. In your packet, you have this drawing here. I'm going to go back to this and the other one in a second. But you can see from Division Street, for 981 feet, it's very clear that the city of River Falls owns that piece there and maintains it. Mr. Ronzki, our engineer, was doing some research down at the county, and he says the next 387 feet are not recorded, though we believe the Hanson's may be even still be paying taxes on that portion, as is on their tax rolls, as we saw today. Is that accurate, Julie?
City.
City? Okay. But anyway, there's a lot of unclarity. I'm calling this no man's land in a lot of research we've done. Okay? Hanson's think maybe them, we think maybe us, not recorded. Then from that point, up to the Hanson property line is about another 200 feet, of which they definitely own. So let's go back to that. So there's three portions of that road that are just unclear. And when I talk about cleanup, Hanson said, "Hey, let's get that cleaned up." I think the city, for our benefit, we should say, "We should get that cleaned up to meet our needs down the road." So what we would like to do in the agreement would be, they will exchange the easement, give us a 20-foot easement for the three-phase line that we installed in 2003. In exchange, the city will then take full ownership from Division Street up to the Hanson property line and make that a dedicated city street with normal right-of-ways along that road. Also, if the Hanson property should ever annex to the city, we would extend water and sewer from a point right about here, just by the storm shelter, about 200 feet up to their property line. So that would be the agreement. We would take full ownership of that road. They would claim us their property, the last 200 feet. We would take ownership of that. We would make normal right-of-ways. It would be Hanson Drive the whole way, from Division Street up to their property line. And we would agree to extend water sewer should they ever annex. That last piece will remain undeveloped, and also unless they annex. As a city, we're not going to fully finish that street off today. So-- but I believe, and I believe that's what we had discussed, and that's what we're at. So hopefully, that makes a little more sense now, is how that we had-- this goes back 15 years. Clean up the-- get the easement we need. And then also, we can do some things in exchange that will assist the Hanson's and eventually maybe assist the city as well in getting that a dedicated city street. Is there any more-- Sean, does that address your question at all, or do you have more questions?
It did. Thank you for the work that was put into that. It looks like it wasn't-- it took a while to get there, too.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
I do-- oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just have a quick question, too. So the street that we see leaving Division going north is going to be that width all the way up?
That width. I would like-- yes. So I'm not-- again, I can't remember if that was 60 or 66 feet there, normal width. But we would continue that width there the whole way.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I may, if the Hanson representatives are here from the Hanson Trust, too, if they have any questions or comments, would it be possible for them to speak?
Sure. If-- yeah, if Kevin hasn't answered all their questions.
Sean, did we get your answer to your question?
You did.
Yep.
Okay.
Did you guys have any questions?
Well, I believe these guys pretty much--
Good.
Good. Thank you.
I just want to clarify something, because I heard two-- I think I heard two different things you said today. We're not planning on improving that road north of what I would call the storm shelter.
Right, right, yeah, right there, yep. Right at that cul-de-sac where we branch off to go up to the gardens.
Okay. So we're not going to improve there?
We would define it as a city property with the normal right-of-ways.
Okay.
But not pave it and improve it today.
But we're not going to improve it today, until and unless something different happens with the Hanson property.
Correct.
And when it happens, we will install the utilities.
Yeah, we'll install, and we'll take that up there.
So as I said in my memo, there really no funds that are exchanging today. This all future, if they should ever annex, then we would complete that, and we'd have the promise to run the water and sewer.
Okay.
And that would be recorded with the plat.
Perfect. Okay. And then finally, I just would like to say thank you to the Hanson's for your patience and for working with us on this.
Maybe there is one question.
Yeah.
If it's going to be a city property, you know, it's ground, of course, it did actually be graded today, but who's going to, you know, we follow it. But it's going to be the city-owned property. I don't know if there are conflicts or taking care of it.
Reed, I think-- now, Reed's going to correct me if I step out of bounds here, but if it becomes a city street, at that point, the city would then plow a city street. Is that our understanding, Reed?
It depends.
Oh, gosh, here we go. Do you want to talk to that, Reed?
I think it's okay that it's not improved, because then you don't get it.
There's nothing improper about somebody having a private driveway within a public right-of-way. We have a number of examples around town. We all have it. All of our driveways, a portion of it enters the public right-of-way to get out to the actual physical street. We have many situations around town where there are some long extensions of driveways in a public right-of-way, but it is not declared a public street. So we need to determine if there's a reason for that to be a public street and open it as a public street. It doesn't seem like there would be. I haven't been part of these conversations, but I would assume we would leave it as a private driveway within the right-of-way. And then so comes a time where we want to improve it, pave it, curb gutter, sewer, water. We would declare it a public street at that point and open it to the public.
But it begs the question, though, is there any liability issues for them to be plowing on city property?
No.
Okay.
Happens at all of our properties.
Okay.
Other example, longer driveway on a public right-of-way would be the-- what's the fraternity house?
There are two of them over there, yes, by the old, you know, Sycamore Water Tower. So you have the fraternity house is an example. An even better one is the camp-- I believe it's Campus View Apartments that are at the end of Broadway Street. It actually goes down Broadway Street right-of-way for quite a distance before it gets to their physical property. So there are two examples over in that neighborhood.
So it sounds, Larry, like you're still going to have to plow.
Well, if it's a city, it'll be needed to the city.
Correct.
But it's okay that you still plow it, though? Okay?
Okay. Any other questions or anything about this? Otherwise--
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of consent agenda item number 11.
Second.
All in favor? I opposed. Okay, and then you polled number 12.
Resolution authorizing North Substation SCADA panel purchase. And my question is, I got two questions. What is the warranty on the SCADA technology? And my other question that goes with it hand in hand is, do all of our SCADA systems work together, synced together now after we upgrade this one?
Sure. Greg Deitch, our SCADA engineer is here. And Greg is in the bowels of this a little more than I am, so I'll have him and Wayne Cyberling answer the warranty question. And I do know that these SCADA systems are working together, but I'll let them answer it in detail.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The warranty question with the equipment that's installed is, we had one fail at our South Fork Substation about two years ago, about 12 years old. The company that stood behind it replaced it full at no expense. So this company is very reputable and is also here in Wisconsin as well, so.
Thank you.
What was the second question?
Do all of our SCADA systems work-- do they sync now, so they can work from one control?
Yeah. So the electric SCADA system is one system that we're installing. And this panel will bring the North Substation in line with the equipment that we have at the South Substation and also at the power plant. It'd be identical equipment, so it'll all work together for the electric SCADA.
Fantastic. That's what I wanted to hear. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of consent agenda item number 12.
All in favor? Next, move on to Administrator's Report. Anybody's got any questions for Scott?
Couple announcements. City offices will be closed September 3rd in observance of Labor Day. Classes for both UWRF and RF schools begin next week. You want to put drivers on notice that they should-- we like them to always be vigilant, but it's kind of like changing batteries in your smoke detector. There's certain times of year where you think of that more often, and we'd like you at the beginning of the school year to think about your vigilance in driving. Time to remember putting your foot over your brake and thinking about what could be coming in front of you and slowing down, as we're going to have lots of kids going to new places, some kids going to the same places where they're not maybe paying attention as close. And so we just really appreciate the drivers helping keep those kids safe. September 8th is Art on the Kinney, the UWRF rodeo, and the Grand Slam Jam. So if you can't find something to do on September 8th in River Falls, you must be a kind of a boring person, because there's lots to do. Quite a few different types of crowds, too, I suspect. Although there's a challenge out on Facebook that you ought to challenge yourself, if you're one of those crowds, to try to go to one of the other events and kind of do two events in River Falls in one day. So if you're a rodeo person, you should also go to Art on the Kinney. And if you're an Art on the Kinney person, you could also go to the Grand Slam Jam or something and have a good time. The next weekend, then, is Bacon Bash, so you can come and join 9,999 of your closest friends. And then September 27th, we will have a large open house at the library from 6:30 to 8:00, September 27th, for the Kinney Corridor Project. We had a really good turnout for the Customer Appreciation Event on August 16th. Appreciate that not everyone can come and join us at the middle of the day, but we appreciate being able to see the folks. And I was happy and thankful for all the city employees who come together to do that event. It's nice to see all the different departments coming together. I do want to mention that August 29th, tomorrow, from 1:30 to 3:00, at the Public Works Garage, we'll have some cake and rip your floats in honor of Bob Schwalin. Bob is retiring from the city. Bob was the fire chief when I came to River Falls. He's had 26 years with the fire department and another 19 years working in combination with the power plant or in the Public Works Garage for us. So Bob's talents will be missed by the city, but appreciate he gets a chance to get out and enjoy some time away from work. So if you'd like to join us, the public is certainly welcome.
Okay. Anybody else got anything? Okay, move on to Comptroller's Report.
The Comptroller's Report for July 2018. General fund revenues through the end of July were $5,423,336, or 54% of budgeted. July revenues include $298,179 in shared revenue and $173,214 in transportation aids. Expenditures for the same period were $5,191,421, or 52% of budgeted. For net of revenues, over expenditures of $240,914.
Thanks, Dan.
All in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned.